Good evening, a special city council meeting. Good evening, a special city council meeting for Tuesday, December the 14th. There will be no, there will be a designated area in the lobby to accommodate members of the public who do not wish to be seated in the council chambers and desire to remain masked and socially distanced regardless of vaccination and status. Pursuant to the July 17th order from the county of Los Angeles Public Health, face masks must be worn by all persons regardless of vaccination status while in the council chambers. As a standing accommodation to ensure participation of those with sensitive and other risk conditions, the city will offer a nearby alternate location which where individuals who desire to participate at the council meeting and would desire to wear masks, maintain six feet of social distancing, and ensure that those around them with similar protected regardless of vaccination status may watch the meeting. Such individuals will be allowed to remain in that area only if they comply with these requirements. To participate in oral communications, such individuals will be called, can proceed to the public speaking forum to address the city council, and are able to return to a fully masked socially distanced location with minimal exposure to the unmasked individuals. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the city council on any item on this agenda. Public comments will not be taken during each individual agenda item except for public hearing items. Comments on public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussion or any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to the staff and are set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. This is a, so, do we have any speakers?
There are no speaker cards turned in, mayor.
Is there anyone who would like to speak to the council? Seeing none. The study session is to review a multi-year budget projections including financial outlook, capital project funding needs, budget policies, and discussion of the 2223 budget process. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last year, well actually this year, last fiscal year, we didn't have a discussion of budget priorities because I'm a strong believer that we should be having those conversations before we even start the budget process. And so what I wanted to do today with Michael, our administrative, O'Brien, our administrative services director's help, is to walk through some kind of setup background, talk about budget policies that the council has already approved in their budget policy document, go through the city's five year, the last three years, the next five years, projections that we had our external auditors review and determine that our projections and assumptions were reasonable because we wanted that third-party assessment. Talk about some recommendations that we want the council to potentially discuss, and then end with a conversation about priorities, what those priorities of the council, what your desires are, what they should be, whether it's the budget process, projects, how we go about activities, anything and everything that you think we should take into consideration during the budget process. So we'll talk about, I want to talk upfront about where we are, and then repeat it at the end before we head into the conversation. Talk about the state's high-risk program, which is a program implemented to determine what cities are high-risk, our financial condition discussion, discussion of the five-year projections, and then we'll talk about priorities and recommendations for the council. So overall, our financial position is very solid. However, when I say solid, we have to understand, as we'll discuss in this presentation, that there are revenues that we received and savings on the expense side that are not necessarily something we can rely upon in the long term. And so while we had a very good year in 2020 through 21, it is not a pattern that we can look forward and presume we can make decisions and add ongoing expenditures and assume that revenue necessarily is going to be there. In terms of our general focus, we focus on sales and property tax base. We, more so than many cities, our fees are very low on a variety of fronts. The risk exposure presents to the city is that it increases the subsidy that general taxpayers make for other activities which are not necessarily activities benefiting San Dimas residents or have a personal private benefit. For example, non-city residents that do take classes in the city that are heavily subsidized by our property and sales tax means a non-city resident benefits from that activity to the detriment of the taxpayers. Or a development activity that has a specific benefit to that specific developer, we subsidize the activity that helps facilitate that personal benefit. That is the risk associated with this practice. Our city infrastructure is older and aging, more so in some cases than other cities, and we'll see that in the presentation. And the city is already starting to pivot to more of a long-term perspective and planning, but we have to focus on the long term, I believe, much more than we are already.
Chris, just a point of clarification, I think I know the answer, but the false sense of security or the solid financial position, is that attributed to something that is not certain, so it's not attributed to a specific sales tax or a strategy, perhaps an anomaly of a business or something like that that thrived?
A large chunk of it is pandemic-specific. And so once we get past the pandemic, it's uncertain whether we can be assured that that type of revenue would still be derived. Also, tax businesses that do sales all over the state and the nation have a choice of where they post that sales tax. And so by no change at all, a business's sales tax that might come here in heavy amounts could easily go somewhere else if the sales are occurring in locations that are outside of San Dimas. And so we've been benefiting, I guess the equivalent is, it's almost like having an Amazon delivery center that you're getting all the sales tax here locally. This is not, these businesses aren't Amazon, but they're deriving a benefit to our tax base.
Very well, thank you.
The state auditor in 2015 started her high-risk local cities program under legislation that was passed in that year. Out of, and the number of cities that provide their information varies year to year. The last year was 2019, 2020. And in that year, 423 cities presented data, we were 355th strongest. And then out of 423 cities, there are only 68 cities that on the 10 factors that the state auditor evaluates were better than we were overall. Now while that seems great, it supports the position that we have, that we're in a strong financial position, we have to understand that no one method can truly assess a condition of a city or its operations because every city is different. We don't have utilities like many other cities, and in many cities that have utilities, they give a small percentage to the city that supports the general operations because the general operations support the utility. We don't have that. And so that's something we have to consider when we evaluate risk exposure to the city. The categories of what the state auditor looks in, you know, financial reserves, can we cover unexpected costs and shortfalls? How much debt do we take? Can we pay our bills because we have enough cash in the bank when the bills come due? The trends in our revenue, generally you want to see an increasing revenue for a healthier city that doesn't risk expose their activities that depend on that revenue. And what are our retirement obligations? Because that's one area that has exerted tremendous pressure on operating budgets. We're paying for retirement benefits for employees that either have left the organization or are current and are accruing that benefit, put a downward pressure on what we can spend on public safety, recreation, and other programs.
Chris, is the unfunded mandates we always read about in the paper with these astronomical amounts of money, is that, that's related to retirement, correct?
Unfunded mandates, no. Unfunded mandates would be like the SB 1383 organics program that we will talk about at the regular meeting, where the state puts in a requirement, that that requirement for the city to implement results in additional cost to the city. If they don't pass on some revenue to support that, they're mandating something for the city to do but not paying for it. That's an unfunded mandate. There's a state unfunded mandate program where cities document all those costs every year, and at some point in time, the state is supposed to start making distributions and making good towards those payments. But those have been few and far between in the last 20 years. And so cities have accrued millions of dollars of unfunded mandates and seen very little from the state come back.
Thank you. But do we have unfunded pension liability or underfunded?
We do have unfunded pension liability, like 95% of the cities off the hand. I don't know the exact number, it's approximately 13 million total is our pension obligation. So there's a lot of information on this graphic, I won't go through all of it. But the cities you see here are, there's 12 additional cities to San Dimas. The city is currently doing a classification and compensation study of its positions, and through that, we've been evaluating what cities are most like San Dimas on all the different factors, including where do our employees come from? I mean, what's our competitive pool for when we're recruiting? Where are the cities that would be like us? That when we compare our compensation to them, you know, do we pay at, below, or above what they're paid at those cities? Well, we're using those cities here so you can see the state auditors scoring for all these cities. And as you can see, on the far right at 87.6 points out of 100 points is the city of San Dimas. There are only two other cities, Chino Hills and Diamond Bar, that are higher than we are.
That means, is that a high score better?
High scores, yes, much better than low scores. Suffice it to say, if you're Richmond, California, or one of those cities, you're far down into like the 20s and the 30s out of 100 points. When you look at the colors, the bottom color, the orange, represents a maximum of 30 points, which the city of San Dimas received, as did Diamond Bar and Chino. That specifically is to do general fund reserves. Maintaining the ability to go nine months of the year or more in operations through your reserves is considered full points, and the city has been in that position for the last six years, which is since the start of the program. And that's a good thing, but not many cities can tout that they have that.
So that's very positive.
That's very positive. When we look to the Government Finance Officers Association, we talk about long-term financial stability, which is what we should be looking towards is long-term. They look at, you know, how do you spend your money? Do you focus on the long term? How you generate your revenue and how smartly you're doing that? What are your assets and your liabilities that are obligations that have multiple years that impact the city? And then the general environment, political and economic, because we recognize that not every city is the same, and the pressures on one city aren't necessarily the pressures that another city would face. So what I've done is I've taken that theory and information, and I think you've seen this financial pyramid, which I call the fiscal pyramid, when I presented the mid-year update in March of this year. I rejiggered the order of these a little bit, but there's six categories that I break, I would break a city into when I'm evaluating its financial condition, where its risks are, where we should focus. The first one being our available cash, the most important thing. If I can't pay the bills, nothing else matters. If I, since our employees represent two-thirds and more of the expenses of a city and all the services that we provide, if I can't make payroll, we can't expect to provide the services. And so when we evaluate the city, what you're seeing now are snippets from the 2021 CAFR, the annual financial report, which you'll see in the next meeting that you're approving on consent. When we look at cash, we look at that first line that has the yellow underlines, the general fund at $25.3 million. Rep, is usually we're looking at that column of the general fund because most of our operations occur in the general fund. At the bottom in brown, you will see the number of what we had last year at the same time, June 30th, we were at 21, almost 22 million. And as you can see, a pretty healthy uptick in cash that's in the bank at the end of the year. You'll notice on the far right in green, the total governmental funds, I'm going to get a little geeky with the accounting. Governmental accounting standards break all our funds into three different classifications, governmental, proprietary, and fiduciary. Fiduciary effectively are money that we hold like trustees for somebody else, it's not our money. So for CalPERS, when they're holding money of our retirees, they're fiduciaries of the money that are owed to our employees. So it's not CalPERS, it's the employees.
Which figure represents our reserve?
Our reserve, it'll be the next slide, next two slides, we'll talk about the reserves. And so the second category of proprietary really are business type of transactions, like the golf course is an external business. We have an external operator that's running it. It should be generating its own revenue, and that revenue should be paid for its expenses. The same thing happens when you have an internal business. In some cities, you'll see a print shop, and their customers are departments. Well, that print shop should be able to generate that revenue from the departments to run its operations, so they treat it like a business and classify it not in the general fund or any of these funds, but in a separate classification of funds. The big one is this governmental funds that you see here with the green line. It represents all the general governmental activities that we have. Most cities have all the resources or majority of them here. You can see we have the general fund, which funds most of our activities, we have the golf course, the housing authority, and then a number of other funds that are, you know, capital-related and otherwise that are aggregated to this big 20 million number for a total amount of cash of 50.7 million in the bank. Well, 50.7 million is a very, very healthy bank account to have, and we invest that money and generate a rate of return, so that's fantastic. When you look at the bottom, that brown number at 41 million, that's how much cash we had the bank, that's June 30th, the last year. So we increased our cash position by an excess of $9 million in the bank. Our reserves is what we use to pay for both anticipated and unanticipated expenses. And to council member Breton's question, the yellow line, there are five categories to a fund balance reserve. Unassigned, which is where we hold the majority of our cash, means we have money in the bank that we, that the council, that no action has been taken to allocate it for some type of use. So it's effectively money that you could decide to budget if you so choose. The next category up is assigned. Let's say we allocate money in the budget to some specific purpose like the general plan update, then you have to move the money from unassigned to assigned, which you can see there, general plan update. The next category up is committed. Committed are resources that the city has taken in action either through ordinance or resolution to restrict that money for that specific purpose. It's a higher level restriction than the budget. You know, an ordinance clearly requires two readings, and it takes effect 30 days after, so changing that is more difficult. Above that is restricted category. Restricted category is where the restrictions on the funds come from some external entity, a governmental agency. You know, we get housing funds, federal government, the state restrict those funds, it's legally restricted, so they have to go in this category. Non-spendable are money that in essence are resources that we have that are not accessible for whether they're intangible or where their money that is, the restrictions don't allow us to use it over the course of the next year. The lion's share of the 11.5 million here, or 11.6, is redevelopment-related money that we still are trying to resolve, that once we resolve our obligation documents, that the money will start to become available to the city and will start to fall to the lower categories. Well, the yellow line, while I highlight the 20, the almost 22 million in reserve, as you remember back in March, I mentioned, this is not a dollar amount that we can just cut a check and spend it and think everything is just going to be okay. What happens is, you have to take all the numbers, including the red one, which is a negative number for the golf course, add them all together to get what you see here in the green, 14.5 million. And those numbers have to add up to something effectively, each fund has to effectively end up at least at zero or positive in the general fund. So the general fund can never go negative and unassigned, ever. And so when I look at that and you say, Chris, if I needed to cut a check right now that I didn't have to restore that money in any way, how much do I really have that I can cut? It's not 22 million, the yellow number, it's the green number, 14.5. Because if I cut a check for 21 million, that's 22 million, this non-assigned fund balance for all these funds would end up being negative 7.5 million because we, the golf course received money from the general fund, so effectively it was a loan to the general, to the golf course, it has to be paid back at some point in time. Because it's owed back to the general fund, by accounting standards, you show that that money is money that will be coming back in effect. Well, that's not money you can then spend again, so you only really have 14.5 million. So even though the general fund says one number, I always like to focus that second number so we really understand our real reserve, spendable reserve is 14.5. The prior year numbers, clearly we made quite a bit of a difference. Our spendable reserve went up approximately just shy of 6 million, which is, which is great, so we're moving in the right direction.
Before you go off that slide, Chris?
Yes.
I'm just, so, I think in the past, we've always, that yellow underlined number is what we've considered the reserves.
We actually look at more, we look at the additional categories above. We don't use non-spendable in that number. There's a calculation that I will show on a later slide that has that percentage.
So that, so that, I'm just trying to compare this or reconcile this with the number that we've used in the past because, you know, it's a little bit different the way you're presenting it, which is great, and it's more detailed, and I like it. you're presenting it, which is great, and it's more detailed, and I like it, but I'm trying to, so, what number is it that would compare to what we've talked about in the past, where it was seventy-eight percent or eighty percent of the general fund? I mean, it seemed to be in the, in that range, anyway.
On page twenty-five, you'll see that the general fund shows ninety-three point one percent. So of our expenditures and transfers, how much do we have in the, what they call unrestricted reserves, meaning these categories right here? It means the money that's not assigned to anything, money that we set in the budget we may use for something that you could easily change, and then committed, money that we may have passed a resolution or an ordinance to restrict it, that you could go and reverse it this year and be able to spend it. That's your, that's the reserve number we should be using for that percentage.
Yes, and that's what I was, my second question was going to be about that very thing, those assigned to numbers, as you said, they were, I think we included them in past calculations of the reserves, and because, yeah, I mean, they're in a fund right now that are, we're saying, oh, it should be spent for X, but we can change our mind tomorrow and say we want to spend it for nothing, or take it out, or whatever, and we can put more in it or something. Okay, thanks.
Chris, could you explain the golf course maintenance on operations, the negative seven million for forty-six? Could you explain how we come up with that number?
The golf course took a loan for, I believe, capital improvements of the golf course. The loan had an interest rate on it. And so the loan and its interest accrues to be paid back to the general fund. So that number has been decreasing every year. Last year, it was just shy of eight million, at seven point, at almost nine million. So every year, you'll see it go smaller and smaller and smaller as the obligation gets paid off. And so from an accounting perspective, it's a loan the general fund is owed. The general fund could decide to just write it off. It's our golf course, let's write it off, you eliminate that debt, and your unassigned fund balance drops to fourteen point five million, and then you don't have this accounting thing going on. But the reality is, the golf course generates money on its own, it generates a profit, and part of that profit keeps on going to the general fund, and every year, you're getting more and more and more of it. And so I think, I like the setup, because it's a true reflection of what's happening, but the average resident, average person doesn't really, they see that and they think that something's wrong, that this big negative number is in the golf course. The golf course is cash flow positive, it makes money every year. From a financial position, which is a snapshot, when I take a picture of, what do we look like right this moment? It's in a negative position, not operations, it generates money every year, it has debt. This is like having a rental property that generates ten thousand dollars a month, but you have a loan of a million dollars on it. It generates ten thousand dollars a month in profit, but when I take a snapshot in time and say, how much value do I have, that million-dollar loan is deducted from the value, and in some cases, it's a negative number.
Okay, thank you.
Operating capacity is the lifeblood that we use to generate, to pay for activities. So it's all our revenue. So in the general fund, we generated twenty-seven, just a little bit over twenty-seven million dollars last fiscal year. Compared to the year prior, was twenty-three point two million. We'll talk about why there's a significant difference. There's a lot of pandemic-related activity that caused some of this increase. Total governmental funds, when you look at, if somebody asks, what's the total general revenue the city receives governmentally, it's thirty-eight million dollars this year. And I like to translate that into, what does it mean per resident? Per resident, in 2021, we generated almost eight hundred dollars in revenue. That doesn't mean that a resident is paying eight hundred dollars in taxes that the city is taking and using for activities. We have to recognize that a big chunk of our taxes are sales tax, and a lot of our sales tax is generated by nonresidents that may come and shop at Costco or any other business. Their sales tax, when they buy it in San Dimas, stays in San Dimas. And so the taxpayers, our local taxpayers, pay less than seven ninety-five. When we compare that to last year, last year, we were at six hundred and eighty dollars. When you compare it, and I've been in the middle of doing the analysis to our other twelve cities, to determine where are we at compared to the others, the first two cities that you saw on the list, let me go back to that, Arcadia and Azusa, we are up about a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars less per capita in revenue generation than they are. So when you look at us, and let's say, compare yourself, us to Arcadia and Azusa, and say, well, why can't we do that thing that Arcadia is doing? We have to, we have to remind ourselves that Arcadia generates two hundred dollars more per capita in tax revenue than we do. So if everything was equal, we cannot do the things that that city can with that revenue source. So we either have to do it smarter, better, do less, to be able to do equivalent activities. And so that is a number we will see again in the future, when we start talking about expenditures, but not in this presentation. The next categories are capital obligations, things that are tangible, that have a long life, and then the liabilities, such as the pension obligations that we have, that Councilmember Vienna brought up. So what I, so this, while I'm showing you this table, this table isn't necessarily perfect and exact, and doesn't account for everything in it. We have certain type of assets, and I've broken it down into three categories. The main two categories, really, we look at are perpetual infrastructure and lifecycle assets. Lifecycle assets are like the things we talked about when we created Fund One Hundred, an HVAC. We know an HVAC has a service life of twenty-five years. Generally, we'll have to replace it around twenty-five years. It may go a little bit longer, it may go a little bit less, but you ain't getting that much more or less, so you know you're going to have to replace it on some kind of life cycle. A perpetual infrastructure, like a street, technically has a life, but that hard and fast, it's plus or minus one year from a certain point, isn't there. So I can continue patching a street and going longer and longer and longer. It's not like the street's going to go kaput one day, like an HVAC or a water heater, and now, now I got to do something. It's just going to degrade over time. So I call it a perpetual asset, just to distinguish those two. And then the third category, an enterprise asset, is really these two assets, but only for activities that are enterprises, like the golf course that generates its own money, the mobile home park that generates its own money, the equestrian center that generates its own money, and then the muni, I added the muni yard there, not because it qualifies as an enterprise, but just to separate it out from everything else. And then we have liabilities, which are all our obligations, pensions, other post-employment benefits, debt that we may have. And so when we take a look at this and see what are those obligations, on the actual street or perpetual infrastructure, the city is rated on a system of a hundred points. Sherry will talk more about this later. Out of a hundred points being a perfect street, the city is fifty-six. When you compare ourselves to the state average and other cities that are around us, we're worse off than almost every other city. Laverne at seventy-three, Clermont sixty-nine, and Pomona at sixty-four, we're even less than West Covina, and West Covina is considered a high-risk financial city. And so that's the quality of our streets. And so I asked the question, can we rely upon that number? And the answer is yes, because we had just done a street condition assessment, so that's an accurate number right there. In order to start improving that number, we need to spend another five million dollars than we're currently spending. That's five million of resources we're not, we don't have to expend. The next category, we created Fund One Hundred to determine, when do I need to replace a roof, how much money do I need in the bank today, and how much do I need to set aside every year, so that when I get to that roof replacement, the money is sitting in the bank? When we take out the golf course, the equestrian, our IT vehicles and equipment, we come up with a total of almost sixteen million dollars of a life cycle. So if everything had the same start year and end year, at the end year, we would need sixteen million dollars to replace all of that, or to rehab everything. When we calculate that not everything is at its end of life, this roof is halfway through, some things are newer, some things are older, we calculated that at this point, right now, what we should have in the bank is five point six million dollars. The council took an action to allocate a million. So that means we have another four point six million we need to set aside for those assets, where we know we should have money in the bank right now to eventually replace them. Every year, though, to continue the progress, we need one point three million dollars, when you take all these IT vehicle, equipment things out. If you add IT vehicles and equipment, you're adding four hundred thousand of that, so it's a one point seven million.
Chris, I want to pause there, just to digest a little bit of it. So I'm looking at the line with the red, red writing, where there's a million dollars in the fund, and that's because we're figuring, on average, approximately five point six or five point five nine million dollars is needed for that year, or what does that five point five mean?
The five point five million would mean, I'll give you the example, if the roof costs a hundred thousand dollars at replacement, and we're halfway in its life, year fifteen, I should have fifty thousand in the bank. And every year, I add a little bit, so that when I get to year thirty, to do the roof replacement, a hundred thousand, I'm sitting on a hundred thousand. And when we calculate that hundred thousand, we calculate it at its future replacement value. So if we did a roof today for a hundred thousand, we are going to calculate, in thirty years, when I replace the roof, how much would it cost? At that point, it may be one forty. So we'll then set it up this way to show we need one forty, and every year, one thirtieth of that amount should be put in an account. What it means is, when we look at the operating budget, what we're first going to say is, how much do I need to set aside for that roof, that HVAC, that other stuff into this account? We're going to do that first, before we decide, now, how do I spend the rest of that money in today's budget?
Yeah, and, yeah, I love that, the way we're doing that, and, I mean, it's not that we weren't doing it at all before, but now it's a little bit clearer on what we're doing. And I guess my question is, you got the roof you're talking about for a hundred and forty thousand dollars thirty years from now? You've got the HVAC, which is X amount of, all these different things that are, that are those lifecycle types of, there's a lifecycle, and there's an expense at the end of the lifecycle. If you took a thirty-year, or a fifty-year, or some number of year time period, on the expense side, are we, is there an average expense, I mean, one year is going to be here, another year is going to be down lower, but is there an average expense that we're kind of aiming to fund every year?
That's that number right here that says annual amount. So if you contribute this number, for all the assets we've itemized, the presumption is, when they come due to be replaced, you're not, we're not coming to the council and saying, I'm sorry, the roof just failed, we need five hundred thousand dollars out of the budget, you now got to figure out where you're going to cut or take it out of this reserves that you were keeping for a rainy day. What we were trying to avoid is, we're trying to do two things. One, we already bought the roof, so we got to make sure we pay for its replacement ongoing until we decide we don't want the building anymore. And so, and two, start setting the money aside today, because it's much too easy to just spend all the money today and worry about the roof in the year you get to the roof, and when you take that money out of the bank, when the roof needs to be replaced, you're impacting other operations that may be key priorities. It's less pain to just set the money aside now every year and know it's not available, and make smarter decisions every year in the budget than it would be to just say, just don't worry about it, we'll, we'll pay for it when we get there, which most cities do, they pay as they go. So the roof comes due, and okay, I need half a million for the roof, that means half million less for all these other projects. It's not the smart way for us to do it, and this city has been very smart in how it's operated for the last twenty years, very conservatively financially. This makes us even more conservative, because we're starting to pay for the things we already have before we're buying new stuff.
Last, thank you, and that's, that's where I was headed with that, so it's the one point three million that we should be putting in this year, it might be a slightly different number next year, but it's about that, it might increase a tiny bit every year.
As we add assets, and as we replace something and recalculate what's the future cost of this new thing, that number will start to change. Right now, we're around one point seven when you include IT vehicles and equipment, and we're going to be doing the same analysis for the golf course, and hoping that we can get our equestrian center to do the same thing with the equestrian center.
Okay, so the last question is about where we should be right now. It'd be great, as you were saying, to have the five point five nine million dollars, and then that would be where we should be right now on our path to
Correct.
To be able to spend the money later on. And my question is, the one point three, and whatever number that is every year, because of the different things you just mentioned, is that, does that include the catch-up money, so that in some number of years, we'll be, we won't have a red number there, we'd have a zero, because we would have actually had the number that we really need in year three, four, five, whatever?
While we have, while it's, you know, the good year we had this year doesn't allow us to just add a bunch of staff that have ongoing cost, it does allow us to make good movement on these one-time things. My recommendation to the council will be, we fully fund the five point five million, because we can, out of a reserve balance at that ninety-three percent, so you will be caught up with those type of assets.
And then every year, we'll add that, not the five million dollars or whatever, we'll add one point something million, or around there, and so from that, so you have that one-time infusion, and then you're better off going years forward.
We're in a position to basically fully fund it, and then every year, the money we should be putting aside to allocate it, and not get behind.
You're saying that the fund right now is ninety-three point two, or something like that, you said? Okay, the question is, if we fully fund the four billion five fifty-nine, and you're saying it's ninety-three, what is that going to take us down to percentage-wise?
The beauty of it is, it'll still stay at ninety-three point one, because the category that money goes into is considered part of that reserve. We're just saying, instead of keeping it unallocated for, we don't know what we're going to use it for, we're saying, we know we're going to eventually have to use it for all these replacement assets, so why don't you call it that? When you know you're going to have to, what we're saying is, we're treating it like it's free available money, so the general taxpayer thinks, you guys are wealthy, but on every city's dreams. The reality is, well, yes, when we look at cash, but most of that cash, there's things that it has to go to that are obligations, that if we were going to pay for it, that reserve will be much smaller. And so I'm going to show you the recommendation, it'll still keep us above the target the council had, but it more accurately will reflect what that money needs to go to.
Okay, thanks.
The golf course, I'm going to start moving a little quicker, because I don't think we'll make it to seven o'clock and finish this. So the golf course, we just found out this year, the irrigation system will need to be replaced eventually. The estimate from other cities that are like ours, it's about three to five million dollars. Our current capital account on the golf course only has a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And so there is going to be, depending on when we do it, some type of either debt service or some other mechanism to pay for it. And if the golf course can't generate the payments or the money to pay for the golf course improvements, the general fund becomes the obligated fund to pay for it. So we plug in a million dollars there a year for approximately a four-year period to account for that. We talked about the rec center before. We calculated that the bare-bones needs of the rec center to keep it functional is just shy of nine hundred thousand. It could fail, the pool can fail at any moment, and we would incur a pretty significant expense, so this is more of an imminent potential it could happen. Other golf course assets, the mobile home park, the muni yard, and the equestrian center, we haven't looked at those yet in full detail to know what that dollar amount is. On the liability side, if the lot, if the gold line takes the muni lot, we calculated at least a twenty-three million dollar cost. That cost, if we took debt, would range from seven hundred fifty to nine hundred thousand a year, so we listed it here. Our pension obligation is just, just shy of thirteen million dollars, or it went up nine hundred and forty-two thousand this year. So if you were going to keep up and not, and not let that liability continue to grow exponentially, we'd be setting aside this year, or last year, another nine hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. We didn't. We did it on the new retirement system, which was seventy-eight thousand, we couldn't afford to do it when we budgeted that year. Our other post-employment benefits went up by about three hundred thousand. Our total unfunded is two point five million, so you get, so these, you get these adding up to about nine and a half million dollars of obligations, that we don't have money identified for how we're going to do that. The last bit is our activities. I'll just quickly go. Our expenses were about thirty-three point two million. Of that, two point four million were generated from charges, that we charge somebody, you do a rec class, you pay a fee. The recovery rate was seven point two percent. It's never intended to be a hundred percent, but it's not usually as low as seven point two percent. Our rec programs are at fourteen percent, and community development comes in at the highest percentage of about fifty percent cost recovery. So without going through this chart, I'll just give it in an essence. Every year for the last three years, when we budgeted, we've budgeted and predicted a deficit. Those are the red numbers you see in the second to last line that says budget change. It takes what we budgeted for our anticipated revenue, minus what we budget for what we're going to spend, and we predict that if everything went the way we projected- And we predict that if everything went the way we projected, we'd be using our reserves to pay for that. In two of the last three years, we didn't end the year in the negative, we ended it in the positive side. And there's a lot of different reasons for it. On the savings side, we didn't fill all our positions. We had projects we budgeted for that we weren't able to get to, so we carried over those projects. So, you know, Covina Road is a project we're doing now, but last year when you put it in the budget, it looks like you're going to spend 3 and 1/2 million dollars on Covina. So it plays into all these numbers when you look at all the governmental wide funds. But if you don't spend it, it looked like we were going to spend it and be in a deficit, but not spending it means you're in the plus side. So there's a lot of nuances there. On the revenue side, we have to be conservative. If we predict a number and we're wrong on the revenue side, we're getting, cutting into reserves or cutting operations. So it's better to be conservative on what you budget and end up higher and having more money in the end than less and cutting services. So in 2020, 21, you'll see the actual change between what we got in revenue or received in revenue and what we spent was about 4 million dollars to the plus. There's a lot of that as a sales tax related to pandemic businesses, but some of it is savings from salaries. This slide will talk about the specifics of it. You'll see sales tax revenue of 4.3 million, some higher property tax and predicted. During the pandemic, we predicted a very negative year for obvious reasons. Nobody has any idea what a worldwide pandemic is going to do to sales tax, tourism, the like. Fortunately, it wasn't as bad economically as we predicted. So our numbers were far better than what we projected. Parking enforcement, we're above, we thought we would do less enforcement, we ended up doing more. The use of money, which is income, we invest regularly and interest rates have been dropping. So we'd be getting a lower rate of return than we normally get. So the money came in less than we expected. And then recreation classes, we obviously weren't at full ramp up. So revenue was less than what we normally would predict. Lot of salary savings for part-timers coming from recreation services. And then I won't go over the rest. A lot of expenditures that got carried over, we didn't spend it. Now going back to the impact, so all of this, what happens during the course of the year, the things we do, the things we pay, come down to an impact on our reserves. And so this is a very busy slide, but I boxed the two columns that we should look at. The first one is the general fund reserve that adds up to the 93.1%. That's the target we would use to say, are we above 70, are we above 75? We're at 93%. And the three categories that we, I'm sorry, the 93% is just these first two numbers. The last one is non-spendable. We have unassigned, assigned, and we don't have any committed funds in the general fund. When we look over to the governmental funds, the green circle that circles was that number I said, what money could we cut a check for that we didn't have to worry about later? That's that 14 million dollars that we have instead of the 22. And then you add all that up and if you ask yourself, if I do the same calculation we do in the general fund, but I do it for all the governmental funds together, which include a lot of capital funds, the housing funds, all that together, we end up having a 43.4% reserve, which is phenomenal in terms of having that when you consider all the capital and the significant amount of investment there.
Which number represents the reserve, the 21 million or the 14 million?
The way we've been calculating it, it's the 93.1%. So where the council wanted, I believe, 70%, they had a target. And we've been going progressively up every year. We are now at 93.1%.
So help me understand how, within a year, I think last year, we were arguing over 68 to 75 or something like that, and now we're at 93. How is that?
When you have a pandemic-related business, it brings you 4 million more dollars and our consultants believed it was going to come in, that basically makes that switch for you, along with, you know, 600,000 of salary savings from vacancies that weren't filled or retirements and the different activities that have taken place over the years. It ends up being a very good positive for us. But at the time we were doing the budget, we couldn't predict that that type of money from a brand-new business, we had no idea how the operations were going to function and how it was going to relate to sales tax revenue was going to be affecting our books. But thankfully, for this last year, we had the results we had, so.
In essence, let's just say when we looked at the numbers, I was scratching my eyes saying, this is a mistake, complete mistake. No, in fact, it isn't. But it's an amount of money that there is zero guarantee it's going to last long.
Right, I understand that. So, so Michael, I think, so the 93.1 in that boxed area of the chart, that is the number that we, for a general fund, that is the total, those expenses, those types of expenses, unassigned, assigned and just cash laying around, not just laying around, but that cash, that was the number we were using in past years where we would say, oh, we have 80%, we have 82%, we have whatever.
Yeah, typically in the past, the only caveat to this is the equipment reserve or assigned equipment number that's really represented by Fund 70, we would normally not include that.
Correct.
So in this case, 104,000 wouldn't be included in the total, but we would look at those assigned and unassigned amounts, compare it to the operating expenditures. So not necessarily the transfers or capital, but just operating, the things we know we have to, the obligations we know we have every year and calculate a percentage off of that.
Yeah, because I, because I think what we have, and we made that decision to put some of the general fund money in a numbered fund, like you're saying, the Fund 70, Fund 21, I believe is the parks.
Yeah, 20, 21, 22, 23.
21, you know, those parks ones that are just, and so at certain times, we had put money over there and we had really said, those monies are going to be expended for those particular things. They may be, it's kind of like Chris was saying about things going along in the future, they're going to be expended at some point for something. And sometimes the fund balance may be zero because we just spent it all in Marshawn Park or whatever, and sometimes it would have a lot of money in it. So to compare apples to apples of what we used to say, those numbered funds would not be included. And so, you know, not to get into it right now, but I'm just trying to get my head around that 93% I don't think is the number that does not correspond to the number that you were talking about, Ryan, that we were haggling over the other, you know, last year.
No, it does correspond because
I know it equals, but I don't think it's the same set of numbers.
No, I think what, I think what they're saying is there was an anomaly in terms of revenue that just wildly increased that number. Is that what?
Yeah, I mean, we were, obviously we're very cautious with our revenue numbers. I mean, not only just sales tax, but business license, transient occupancy taxes, fine and forfeiture's, franchise taxes. We anticipated, and I believe rightfully so, that the lockdowns, the closures, we're going to have a big effect on our businesses and our ability of our businesses to stay in business. We were expecting closures, you know, hotels being at 25 to 50% capacity. So we're expecting large reductions. Somehow, that did not happen. We ended up being pretty solid, especially compared to what we budgeted. And the result was, when we were looking at multimillion-dollar losses, it completely flipped and became a very positive number. But as far as the percentage, yeah, that is what we, how we normally would calculate, the unassigned, the assigned versus the operating expenditures for that budget year. And it is 93%, which I know is very large, but that's what the end of the numbers look like. So it's a pretty good apples-to-apples comparison of what we normally would look at. The one thing I would say as far as the difference between what we're doing now with the Fund 100 and what we normally did, the way the process was of saying, okay, we're going to set aside some money, is the prior approach was, we're going to take 10% of whatever our sales tax revenue was and we'll dump it into Fund 12, or we'll dump it into Fund 70 or Fund 20. But we weren't truly identifying what are those future needs. We were kind of looking at it as, well, we got to do Marshawn Park, so let's make sure we start putting money aside and do that. Where now, we're really starting to identify what are all those maintenance needs, you know, improvement needs that are going to have to take place of what we currently have, identify, put a number to it and then say, okay, realistically, we need to actually move this much money, not just 10% of a certain number or a certain figure to come up with that.
And there's not, it makes for easier budgeting to just set a dollar amount aside and basically say, we'll figure it out as we go along, 10% sounds reasonable. But when you start to look at the specifics and you start to add all the different pieces to it, you realize that deciding on a number, not arbitrarily, but saying this seems reasonable, that doesn't impact our operations, means you may be shortcut, shortchanging a lot of other things that create problems later. You just defer the problem. And so with the reserves, this next slide is the recommendation I'm making to the council where you see this first slide, the first column is the general fund, that reserve balance where you see 21.966 million. And then you had the assigned fund balance here, which is about 3.9 million. And then there's nothing above it, meaning there's no committed funds. Those three categories is what we use to come up with that percentage for the general fund reserve. What I've written here is, you'll see, for the 21.96 million, you have to subtract the golf course liability. So you're really left with 14.5 million realistically in spendable dollars, but from accounting perspective, the books will show 21, almost 22 million dollars. What I'm recommending is that we stop putting this large dollar amount in a pile of money that looks like we have no use for it and convey to the public, to ourselves, what do we need to allocate the money to? So what I'm recommending, so what I'm recommending is, we allocate to, not to an assigned balance like in the budget, but we pass a resolution or preferably an ordinance that restricts this money to set aside the 5 and 1/2 million plus about 800,000 for IT infrastructure, vehicle replacement and equipment into that Fund 100 account that currently only has a million dollars, but the million isn't even in the reserves, is in a separate account that's not even accounted for. We move it into this account. So we put 6.3 million for that. We set aside 100% of the other post-employment benefit liability, 2.5 million there. And we add 1.3 million for compensated absences. Compensated absences are accrued leaves that if you left, we're doing a payout. So you leave today, I'm paying for your vacation. Let's say you have $20,000 in vacation accrued, we're cutting a check for $20,000. That's a, that's a compensated absence is that when an employee is accrued it, you have to show the liability on your books. Realistically, we should never be cutting a check for 1.26 million because that presumes that every single employee in the city has left, we've shut down operations. So I know realistically that while we can set this aside as a reserve, it doesn't mean we're going to go out and spend it, which means it could be available for something in an emergency or something happens. However, because we have a liability, by at least designating it here and recognizing that we have money in the bank to cover it, it conveys to the public, we know what we're doing and we've addressed, this is not a liability, we've already set the money aside for it. And when we get a big payout, we can pay it out of this account right there and avoid the impact on the department. So if we have the Public Works Director retire tomorrow and she gets a $50,000, I'm sorry, not tomorrow, May 1st, and she gets a $50,000 payout, I hope she never retires, but let's say it happened, we would break the budget for her budget in Public Works. Because cutting a check for 50,000 with only two years left in the year, you haven't predicted that that was going to happen and we would be coming back to the council and saying, we need this authorization from reserves. What we could do through this recommendation is, that $50,000 piece that's unanticipated, it's a large payout of compensated absence, we can just authorize its payment from that account and you don't break the department's budget. You project it, you predict it. So this is what I would recommend. So realistically, our reserve, our emergency, what money is really available in the case that something truly unanticipated came up and we have to cut a check would be 5 million dollars. But the total reserve we have that we would use to calculate that percentage would still be 93.1%. We just allocated the money a little bit differently. The council still fully controls all this revenue. You're just designating it for specific uses.
How much was our public health department? Too soon.
Let's get, let's get through the municipal yard issue first and then we can go to more So in the policies the council passed in June of this year, you'll see these highlighted red words as a theme. We want balance in how we do our operations. We want a sustainable budget that's not balanced on one-time fixes, but long-term fixes. We want to not cannibalize capital just to pay for operational expenses. We want to really look at the long-term. We need to improve efficiency through technology and other systems, and we've done some of that, like MySanDemus was one way. MySanDemus now connects into the Exela system. We're working on Exela having online access so people can do more from home instead of coming to the front counter. We want reasonable pay for employees and benefits that is sustainable for the level of activities we want our city to have. And we need to look at potential focus on additional revenue to augment our resources, which could be a number of different fronts. It could be grants, it could be other sources. We want to maximize our cost recovery and reduce taxpayer subsidies. We want to look at programs and reevaluate and contract or eliminate programs that are low-use costing the city money and not providing the type of benefit for the dollars that we're spending for it. And then we want to balance our long-term obligations with our current year activities. Those are all policies the council passed and help inform the budget process. When we look at the next five-year projections, which will really just focus on the bottom line instead of going through all the different categories of revenue expenditures, budget projections are intended to not be perfectly accurate because we're projecting, they're estimates. They're used to facilitate future planning and knowing that nobody can know what the economy looks like two years, three years, four years from now. So we, we make assumptions as we build that projection so that we know when we have a really bad year in the future, rather than knowing the bad year is coming four months before the fiscal year starts, we could know two, three, four years in advance, prepare for it and hope that it doesn't happen the way we projected it would occur. We need to constantly be looking at this and adjusting it as new data comes out. And one additional aspect we did with our five-year projection is we provided that projection to our city external auditor. And we said, we wanted to have an independent look at our financials to determine whether the numbers we were using, the assumptions that go into the numbers are reasonable so that this isn't just a staff-driven projection that we said, this is what we think is going to happen and that it's, there's no support or basis for it that's independently verified. We've made a number of assumption in this, suffice it to say, on the revenue side, we've assumed, we have not taken advantage of these businesses that have generated pandemic-related revenue because we can't rely on it. We're going to hope that they provide the resources by the end of the year, but if they don't, we don't break the budget because we didn't build all of that in. We're budgeting, when we have a position that we've authorized to fill, we should be fully funding it even if we don't know we're going to have it 100% of the year. It will generate savings. We'll use actuarial assumptions for the PERS liability and we'll be fully staffing our So I'm going to flip through, so you have a hard copy of this. I'm going to just flip through, I mean, this is a projection of our revenues where we're projecting out with increases in the out years. Net operations are showing that we're going to be projecting negative operations in the future years, again, projections. You can see our net deficits going in the out years with a big, big deficit predicted in year 24, 25 and deficit predicted starting next year.
So why are we projecting those deficits?
Where is that number? Michael, where is that number we're looking at here?
Which one are you looking for?
The expense side.
Operations? Go over to another slide. So when we're looking at the revenues and expenditures, obviously there's a significant difference in sales tax because when HDL looked over the numbers for this coming year, we originally budgeted a number, but we re-asked them to look at a five-year forecast for sales tax and the updated number they have for us are now 7.8 million, obviously less than the 10.4 we got this year. And it's because we're not sure how reliable that main source of income is until we see a long-term business model that's going to bring in a significant amount of revenue on a consistent basis, we can't really count on it. So that's the number they gave us and for property tax as well. So it's basically based on the adopted budget with that one difference there for sales tax. So then going on the operating side for the expenditures, you know, when we look at our salaries going across the table, we look at where we're currently at, where employees will be going when their step increases, longevity, all those increases going out projected wise over the next five years. And then CalPERS, we have their actuarial assumptions, but we've also taken into account that there's a high likelihood that they're going to continue to lower the discount rate. We already know, even though these assumptions were done last year, then we know they're going from a 7% to a 6.8% discount rate. They've already decided on that, but if this year doesn't But if this year doesn't meet a 7% or higher return, they're likely to come back and vote to go down to probably 6%. That's an assumption we're making in this model, so we've taken those numbers into account. And then, so, I'm sorry, go back up that other slide, Chris. So from there, you start to see where we're looking at operationally. So for '21, '22, we're looking at being in the good about 510,000. A lot of that has to do with the ARPA funds we've just received that we're going to use to offset lost revenues from the 2020 year. And then some of the eligible expenditures that we currently have in our normal operations that we can use to recoup from that program. So that gives us a net of 510. But going into future years, you start to see that there's an effect of revenues being less than operational expenditures going forward. Okay, next slide. Then we start to add in capital. And when we look at the budget in the five years where the capital, plus the normal Fund 12, operating items like alleys, sidewalks, slurry seal that we usually use out of Fund 12 but is subsidized by the general fund, we've added those numbers in here. And then you start to see that if you go and fund those projects, you're going to start to see a net negative that can be pretty significant. Some of the significant items we have in there is our computer infrastructure, cable, television infrastructure, about a million dollars is projected for that. And then the general plan update, which is about 3.5 million, is also considered in this model. So you start to get to some significant numbers when we're already having an operating loss, which is potentially what could happen if the model is close. And the assumptions we're using is a 2.75% increase annually, which if you look at our, you know, where our PD contract has been, on average over the last five years, it's been about 4% increases, even though this last year was about 1.45. The prior years were a little over 5%. So it's not unreasonable to think 2.75% increases there. And then CPI increases over the last five years was about 2.6%, so a little under 2.75. But when you look at how inflation is right now, it's very reasonable, but 2.75 is a realistic number, if not much higher. So we build that into the model to see where, based on the budget we currently have, taking out some of those one-times, like the downtown civic plan, SB2 planning, our fee study, common class, things that we know we're not going to do every year over the next five years, taking that out and then saying, okay, this is basically what we say we have to do on an annual basis, let's put some increases in there, being that there's going to be increases over time, and what that might look like. And then looking at revenues of a basic 2% increase and then factoring in HDL's property taxes, sales tax figures, this is where we end up bottom-line-wise. And then you start to see, on this last slide, where we're looking at fund balance, we start to see the effect of moving money from unassigned to assigned in order to meet these obligations that we have for maintaining our current assets or replacing them in the future. And then we get to a point where if we did all these things, at the end of '25, '26, we have potentially a negative unassigned fund balance. So while 21.966 is a great number right now, if we really start to attack all these things we say we need to do and things we see we need to do out there in our city, that number can decrease very rapidly because it's just everything costs. It's a resorbant amount of cost to do the things that we need to do. And that's the realistic picture that we're kind of looking at. And then going forward, there's other items as well, as Chris talked about earlier, that are not factored into that model. We have sidewalks, streets, storm drain repairs that the report that Sherri's going to give highlights, aside from the other street funds we have, that's about 3 million-ish a year, we're looking at possibly another 5 million if we really wanted to get streets to where we think they should be. The golf course has identified a sprinkler system that they want to implement, that could be 3 to 5 million dollars. So we're programmed that that could be a million dollars a year for the next four years. And, you know, and maybe another additional year if it truly is 5 million. If we do a municipal yard, you're looking at a bond that could be anywhere from 750 on the low end to 900 million dollars a year, depending on what we build.
Thousand.
Yeah. And so you look at numbers of additional 6.7 million that could possibly be added to that figure if we were trying to get everything done over the next five years. So yeah, we do have a strong, solid base right now, but there are items out there that we need to consider and what that real cost is to accomplish those goals.
And so what you see on this last slide, before I get into the council recommendations and whatnot, which I'll go quickly through some of them to get to discussion of priorities, but we will be continuing this conversation in January. So this is not the end of the conversation about priorities, but we needed to get started here. We are solid. You saw a large swing from what was projected to be a deficit this last year that ended up being a very positive number, but we needed all these other aspects to consider so that we're not under the false impression that while we may be very solid and rated very highly when compared to our peers, not our peers, very few cities look at the nuances that we're trying to get to, to understand that when we take on an obligation, we need to start paying for it before we start paying for new stuff. And so I'm cautioning us that, you know, the money that's coming in, you know, the good times are not rolling in the sense that we've never been a city that, I looked historically, that had jumped to make major swings of changes up or down. And so we were slow and steady and progressive, and because of that, we are so much better because we did that. And so the same thing goes that while we could say doom and gloom about the millions of dollars of obligations in the future, I'm not going to. We know we have them because we're looking at them and we're starting to predict what we're going to do and how we're going to do it and do it in a way that protects the sanctity of what we have as a city and try to make minor corrections to get there. But we got to, so when big dollars come in because of these new revenue sources, until we're absolutely sure the money's going to be there, we should only be looking at it first to plug the holes of stuff and obligations that we had that we didn't have money for. And then if there's money left over, utilize it for one-time activity, presumably something that we would have normally had to pay for out of the general fund, before we decide to say, add 10 sheriff's deputies, add 50 recreation leaders to do programming. That should be the last step of utilizing that revenue.
Hey, Chris. Realizing that we're going to look at this beginning of January, let's cut it down another four or five minutes and allow it before we can start on time, like the regular council meeting.
So the last slides that talk about kind of the way we're looking at the budget, we can flip through that and just get to starting a conversation on the specific priorities. What are the priorities that you want us to consider? And is there any criteria you want us to utilize to identify priorities when we're balancing choices between items? So that we can probably spend the next 10 minutes talking about starting that conversation and then giving us some guidance for our next meeting in January, which will do this conversation during the regular meeting, not a study session. And then we'll cut it at 6:55.
Well, I'll start, I suppose. I think that looking at this and then having, you know, sat in on the audit meeting on the finance committee and having had the distinct honor to serve on that basically my entire term thus far, I think we need to really focus on what are the things that we need, not the wants. And as I shared with staff when we had that meeting, that I think for us on council, it really is a question of looking at it from the perspective of saying, okay, if we removed all politics out of the budget and we just looked at it for what it is in the math, I think it's a completely different discussion than what it is when all of the little, the various interest pieces come into play. And then we need to balance that with what the community wants represented in the budget. But I think staff did a really good job of presenting the numbers, and I think that we really need to better understand some of the things that are in the budget. So for that reason, I'm not necessarily a huge proponent of spending money this upcoming fiscal year on things that aren't necessary. And I say that to say that, you know, when I'm looking at 5 million dollars to increase the quality of our streets and our infrastructure, you know, to me, that's significant, especially when I'm walking Via Verde or San Dimas last week, you know, just walking from San Dimas Avenue and Benita right there, all the way up to Via Verde Park and back, and you can see potholes in the road, you can see some of the issues with the sidewalk and the trails, you know. So I think there's, I think there's infrastructure need that I think needs to be addressed. I'm also concerned for the lifecycle assets that have been outlined here. I mean, realistically, you know, I'm supportive of the notion of funding this annual amount, understanding that would leave a 5 million dollar unassigned balance. But I think we need to take this next fiscal year to further examine these things and really look for areas perhaps that haven't come to fruition or maybe raise consciousness. So I know there's areas we've talked about, you know, and tree maintenance is one of them that came up in a budget recently, where we looked at that and we funded things like that. And technology is another one of those things that we need to really associate all those costs that go into each one of those things, liability, the maintenance, the insurance, contingency funds, so that we can get a real good handle on what's occurring here. You know, if it was an HOA, like this is pretty simple, you know, if you look at the city as a HOA, you know, this conversation ends a couple of different ways if we don't take swift action now. You know, we're in a place right now where we can have this discussion, I think the council, and really be able to dig into it. But I think unnecessary spending next fiscal year until we really see what's going to happen with some of these income sources is not prudent.
Well, Chris, your budget looks for spending that is necessary for future development and future needs. And you're assuming that we should start saving now for those future needs, I'm assuming, right?
Yes.
And I approve that, I think that's an excellent idea. I think that if something's going to happen in five years and we know it's going to cost 5 million dollars or 10 million dollars, we should start saving now for it. And I'm assuming that's what you want to do.
Yes. And let me just add, because we skipped over those slides, philosophically, you're most likely going to get a deficit budget presented to you next year. Because I am going to fund what I think is important to set that stage, knowing that more revenue may come. The goal is, because we don't want to swing to make too much, too many cuts or project too much revenue, we're going to rely on the reserves so that if we, if the music stops and the five-year projection, that year that shows a deficit does actually happen, we have the reserves to buffer that year. And we implement what we will codify in policy as a fiscal resiliency plan, that if that bad year happens, we'll use reserves, but we'll immediately take the following actions to right-size the budget the following year. And then in the intervening years, work to reduce how large that number could be so that by the time we get to that big year four years from now, or five years from now, if it does happen, if we're even still in a deficit position, hopefully it's a lot smaller and the pain is a lot easier to manage than if we do nothing now, get hit with that four years from now and go, what happened? We know it's going to happen potentially at some point, we should be ready for it.
You know, when we talk, just to take the golf course, they're talking about 3.5 million dollars to do the irrigation. Who's assuming that this irrigation is a problem? You know, and the other side of that is, what liability, I know we're the landlord, but what, you know, out of 3.5 million, what are we getting from the golf course, the people that we're leasing this thing to? Are we raising the rates to them or how are we doing this? We're just taking on the fact that we got how many acres of property and we're going to re-irrigate it? And then when was the last time we irrigated? That's 3.5 that we're setting aside that, you know, maybe we need for the roads or something like that. Because we don't know that, we can guess that the irrigation's going to go bad, but I know that they have ongoing maintenance and things like that. And all of a sudden, now today, we're talking about replacing the entire irrigation system to allow a private entity to make money.
So let me get to the second part of that question first. We have a contractual arrangement with the golf course and the city gets a percentage of revenue. So there's an incentive for them to run it at a profit. If they generate profit, we get a percentage, they get a percentage. A percentage of the profit is also shaved off, about 10% that goes into a capital fund that's supposed to fund capital. The issue becomes exactly what you mentioned on large capital improvements. There is a disincentive when you contract out to a function like this, to have an operator like the golf course who does a great job to anticipate these future expenses and start spending that money effectively on those expenses that are coming years later, because it cuts away at the net profit that entity takes. When I look at that and I say, the risk exposure is all on the landlord, you, the council, us, the staff that have to manage it. And if they don't make good long-term maintenance decisions or capital decisions, in the end, if you still want to have a golf course, the buck's going to stop with the city. So either pay for it out of your cash or we take debt financing on the golf course, which is what I would recommend if we didn't have the cash. And then you raise the rates to pay the debt financing. But getting in that position where you're always looking at debt to pay for something that you, had you planned for it, not only would you not incur the debt, you would incur the interest rate that goes with it, and you wouldn't incur a net profit to a private entity that doesn't account for the fact that you have all this capital. And so we're going to be tackling this issue in terms of a capital fee is what we're going to propose, that specifically goes just to capital, does not get, there's no profit that comes off of that, it's all for capital maintenance to reduce the impact that could happen on the general fund. So we'll address the issues, but I don't want to give the false perception that we have a bad operator. It's just that, no, there is no incentive to just start looking at these major things in advance in an operation like that.
Just had a couple, a couple things. Just wanted, and we don't have to answer all these questions right now, especially in the interest of time, but as far as all the projections, want to make sure we take into consideration, and I don't know the answer, the infrastructure bill that was passed by Congress recently, are we going to be getting some money from that? So, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, that infrastructure bill is mostly made up of competitive grants. So it's really based on the criteria they have for awarding it, whether we're disadvantaged community or whatever other criteria they may have for what gets, who gets awarded over the other. We'd have to compete for that, there's no guarantee to that money. There's potential there, but it's competitive, so it's not guaranteed.
And that's a good thing to know, and yet we don't want to give up on that before we even start, you know what I'm saying? So there's probably, there might be some money there, I don't know.
Council member, I don't want to interrupt, but to that point, we've internally been discussing about engaging consulting services just for grants.
Right.
Because you're right, you know, if grants is a collateral duty of staff, it's more challenging to be able to do your daily activities and then apply for the right grants. We'd rather have somebody who understands us, knows the areas that we're looking at and goes out and helps us apply for those grants, I think we'll be more successful.
Right. And that's another expense that's probably going to pay off. And I do appreciate the forward-looking and the long-term kind of planning and trying to get things set aside so that we can pay for things as we go along, as opposed to saying, well, let's find them in that big reserve we have. So I do appreciate all the numbers and everything that we've done. I just want to make sure that other things are included or considered. We're going to be passing a housing element soon, probably in January or so, and that anticipates a whole bunch of housing, a whole bunch of mixed-use, you know, more businesses. So I would imagine that there'd be some sales tax, property and property tax coming from that. And there might be some expenses as well, but that's good to put in the budget so that, you know, when we're projecting these things five or 10 years out, the numbers become, well, what does somebody pick? And if we're just going along with, oh, well, these are the things we're doing right now, and, you know, we're going to do some roads, we're going to do some equipment replacement, et cetera, it doesn't take into consideration some new things that might come along. The other thing is that the compensated absences was an interesting figure and it's not that much in the big scope of things, but it is a million something dollars. And I'm not sure if we need to have that entire amount locked away and not counted as some money that we could just use. We should really probably take the worst, the realistic worst-case scenario in a year, two departments had quid and blah, 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 you know, whatever it is. And they've got a certain amount of money, money coming to them for compensated absences. But I'd be interested in that number, you know, as opposed to funding it entirely. And then the golf course liability, I'm still a little wrapping my head around that 14 million dollars and whether that really needs to be, again, locked away at this point or not considered as part of some money that we could, we could end up using for some other things. And I'm totally in favor of bringing up the PCI, the pavement number. And I think we could probably do that with, well, we're going to be talking about that later, so we can talk about it some more. So in the end, though, you know, we go back to what makes a community a great place to live and work and do business and visit and all that kind of stuff. And we want to make sure that in 2021- make sure that in 2021 and 2022, we are not focusing only on dollars and cents and being all happy that we've got everything in the right spots, we want to also be able to do some things that help uplift the community and make people feel better. There are some trade-offs that probably need to be made between whether we're going to save money and not put the streetlights in downtown, for example, or do that this year. But there's a lot of examples like that, so just want to make sure that we continue to remember that the reason we're doing all this is because of the people who live here, we want to make sure that it's a good place for everybody here.
Just to touch on your point, John, in the model, we are conservative with revenue numbers, but especially when there's, consider like property tax or TOT, and TOT especially, we haven't even gotten back to pre-pandemic levels, so we're still a couple hundred thousand below that, so there's potential there for some decent growth in those areas. But while we're still, you know, thinking, oh, well, we're always going to have this consistent growth, we do have to be kind of realistic in the sense that we, there may be a business that's bringing in decent sales tax or anything that could close. I mean, it wasn't a couple years ago where one of our businesses, that's a pretty large contributor, was talking about closing stores. So there's also that aspect as well. So we're being conservative in the growth projections, but there could be very easily a housing crisis or a closure of a major store that could really affect our numbers. So we try to be prudent, not anticipate some huge increase, but to be, you know, pretty safe on a standard small increase every year.
Just remember, the reason for having a solid budget is so that we can do things that are appealing to people, and so that's the whole purpose of having the solid financial ground. So we've got to just make sure that department heads don't hold off on saying, I don't want to do anything this year because I'm contributing to the bottom line. They've got to come forward, and those things have to get in, in the long-term life cycle type of things that are going to get done, whatever it is, whether it's a park thing, with a youth center, whether it's, whatever it is, so that they get in there in the, we're saving up or we're able to fund those things.
One point of clarification, I just wanted to comment, and this is in regards to the changes that you're recommending to the fund balances. So the committed balances, like the compensated absences, are those committed monies still going to remain in the general fund, are they going to get swept off into other fund So I guess, is the money that we're saying is committed to something but is still available for us to spend, is that money going to stay in the general fund, or is that going to move off, you know, say, you know, compensated absences goes to a personnel fund or something like that?
That remains to be seen if it's a different fund number, but in terms of the ability for the council to use it, it would be no different whether it was sitting in the general fund or not, it's just what you, from a county perspective, allocate it to.
I would just say, this is, of course, my personal opinion and my experience, in some previous experiences, that committed balance, which is still spendable, ends up in other funds and doesn't appear in the general fund balance, and in the CAFER, you're seeing the smaller numbers, so the public sees this very meager reserve, general fund balance, and it just becomes, I think disingenuous is a strong word, so probably not disingenuous, but it can become misleading to the public. So I just think that there's a balance there. I am 100% in favor of looking at future expenses and planning for them, and educating the public that this is what we've tentatively set this money aside for, is totally fine with me. I would just kind of be careful that we don't venture down that path.
We can look at that to make sure it's, there's a rationale why we would put it in a separate fund, if we did that.
I think the term that just makes my skin crawl to this day that refers to that is a cascading surplus, and I must have heard that 20 million times, and it was just, it became an excuse for why the city was broke, rather than a prudent financial decision to ensure the long-term health of the community.
And Eric, just as an example, we have a separate fund, Fund 70, that's considered an internal service fund, and even though it's on a different fund number, on the CAFER, on our financial report, it still shows as an assigned fund balance as a part of the general fund. So that's how we're currently looking at Fund 100, being the same kind of structure, an internal service fund that you would see as a, you know, infrastructure or capital project fund, but as an assigned to or committed under the general fund bucket. So that's probably how it'd end up being, but it's still up in the air right now.
Thank you, Mike. Real brief, and then we need to take a break, we need to get on with our regular scheduled council meeting at 7 o'clock, but the one thing that just reminds me of, a couple of years back, during the budget hearings, we determined that we had overlooked worrying about, worrying about having surpluses and a large fund, you know, we overlooked deferred maintenance on a lot of things, our parks, trees, whatever they may have been, we identified it, and we started talking about those type of things, and I think that's what we need to also can be very mindful of as we go into the next budget session, that because, I mean, let's just take, for example, the Walker House. Walker House was purchased for $550,000, we sat there and we watched it for five, six, seven years, we ended up investing $11 million because we didn't start doing those type of things. So deferred maintenance is something we need to remember as we do it, and I do agree with putting money aside for these big adventures that we know that are coming, but we need to remember deferred maintenance on all our facilities. So at this point, I'm going to take a real quick 10-minute break, and then we're going to get on to the council, regular council meeting, and we'll apologize to the general